This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Welcome everyone to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting and Budget Review for March 19, 2021. Please take note that the Board of Education of the Brighton Central School District in response to the continuing emergency circumstances caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, inconsistent with the New York State Governor's executive orders is conducting its scheduled public meeting this evening, March 9th, 2021, at 7:00 PM, to be held via Zoom and through the Zoom webinar service on our district website. In a moment, we'll offer the public the opportunity to ask any question or make a comment. If you are a member of the community watching us this evening and you would like to ask a question in the upcoming opportunity, please use the chat feature at the bottom of your screen and put your name and address in the chat, and we will call on you shortly to ask your question or to make your comment. And anyone wishing to offer public comments is allowed to do so. You will be unmuted and then offered the opportunity for comment. Also, you have the opportunity always to contact any of us on the board or Dr. McGowan directly, utilizing our contact information that is listed on the district website. So please feel free to send us an email and we would be happy to get back to you with an answer to your question or to discuss any item that you wish in further detail. I also remind members of the public watching us this evening or watching us later on a rebroadcast that all of our budget, or all of our, we are going to talk budget tonight, all of our agenda material is posted on the district website under the Board of Education tab, Meetings and Agendas for tonight's meeting, and all that material is available there for you and anything that we add to that or as we add as we go, we will, we will put in post there also. We are going to spend quite a bit of time tonight discussing budget, and I do remind folks that there is an entire budget section on the district website, including all historical material and backing material to some of the things that we may discuss this evening. And you're welcome to go there at your leisure and find any of that information that you wish to take a look at further. So at this point, Dr. McGowan, do we have anyone listed in the chat that would like to speak to the board?
No, there is nobody listed in the chat.
Okay, thank you. Then we will move forward, please, with a motion from the board to approve our agenda for this evening.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Larry, seconded by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are seven in favor and none opposed. Motion, please, for approval of the minutes from our February 23rd, 2021 Business Meeting.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Andrea and seconded by Karen. Does anyone have anything additional to those minutes, correction or deletion? And all in favor of that approval?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, that's seven in favor and none opposed. So to begin this evening, we will enter the Budget Review portion of the discussion. I turn it over to Dr. McGowan to begin, please.
Thanks very much. This would be the meeting where the people on the screen have probably never been happier that their email is up behind this presentation, that they might have other things. I'm just saying, there might be advantages. I know that you cannot wait for these budget presentations to really dig in and take hold and for us to keep giving them. But tonight's is a little bit different and it is great news actually at this point in the process, we believe, and really important news for us to be giving to the community. The whole point of this conversation this evening is really to set the stage in a preliminary way regarding the budget proposal. So we will make the final proposal, or at least as final as it can be at that point, on March 23rd, depending on the state budget. But tonight, we wanted to start by having a conversation with you regarding what we are going to propose and essentially have some assurances and move forward with some really important decisions that we need to provide feedback to the community on. And the overall gist of this is that every single year, we have a budget conversation for the last many years that holds kids and programs in the lurch, in the balance of a really difficult conversation about us not getting our fair share of support from the state. That remains the case. We are not getting what we are supposed to be getting. We're not even close. Right now, the governor's proposal has us at forty-nine and a half percent of the foundation aid that we should be getting, and that's ballpark eight million dollars short, sixteen percent higher in the tax levy than we need to be. And the problem is, as we're having this conversation, we're talking about the programs that we would need to cut in order to close that gap, and it's always about student programs. That's the bulk of where our spending is, of course. It should be what we're spending money on, and then that becomes the conversation. The problem is, that creates all sorts of anxiety and frustration and emotion and feelings about the work that is happening in the district and the place where our kids are going to school and the community that we live in. And it's the reality, it's the truth. We've told, we've been very direct about that for many years now, that this is the situation we're in and here's where we're at, and we lay it all out and we're very clear with people. It just doesn't feel great. And the problem right now, we're seeing particularly in the pandemic, is that people need stability, they need security, they need safety in knowing what their child is going to have for programming next year, especially given the fact that we haven't been in school in a full five-day-a-week program, and we recognize that. So as we have been contemplating this and thinking about what our goals in the process would be and gathering feedback through the thought exchange and then in the community budget session last week, we really recognize that the themes revolve around putting something out right now that meets those goals and thinks about the long term. Lou, can you flip to the next slide? This process starts in the fall with our key budget guidelines that we present to you and that you adopted. And I want to highlight the areas in red. People are very familiar with the items that we talk about every year and they're a part of our process, but we wanted to really think about how we could make sure that recurring expenses could be funded with sustaining revenue sources, and we had to update that along the way to really think about this a little bit differently, use one-time reserve money that can be supplanted in future years with sustaining revenue. So in other words, we do need to use rainy day funds. We do need to use the reserves that have been put aside and prudently planned with in order to support current programming. Because if we eliminate current programming, we are a shell of ourselves, we're not offering what we should be to the community, for one. But we believe that we can manage this over time and we believe there will be opportunities. And Lou will detail some of those financial strategies specifically, but we believe we can manage that over time and be able to maintain program and who we are. And at the bottom, we wanted to prudently plan for full day K and the debt service that was an impact of the 2017 capital project. This is a commitment we made, it's a promise we made, and we feel like we ought to be fulfilling that promise. We also recognize that we need to comply with the property tax gap, but also understand its long-term impact on financial planning. Our community is very clear. Keep programs, maintain where we're at, maintain the level of excellence that we're at, do not go over the cap, implement full day K. Challenging variables, but we think we can manage each of those. Next slide, please. So the process and the plan for us, you know, we've described this in different ways, but just want to make it clear to the community that what we do is, we review the budget and where we're at and where our spending is for the current year in order to plan for the future year. So how are we expending resources this year and what was our plan last year and how did that work? Did we have the right resources and the right budget lines? Or what adjustments do we need to make along the way? So we review that, then we plan for future years and look at what our kids' needs are going in to the future and develop a spending plan around that. We prepare those materials and we start communicating that with the community, but with all of you, and scrub the numbers along the way, right? So make adjustments to understand how best to utilize resources going into the next year. Do we need as much in every budget line, for example? Or can we make adjustments and move resources around? And we communicate that, we communicate that out to you, we communicate that to our budget makers within the district and really try and make it very clear what the budget looks like going into the next year. And then the governor makes a proposal in January and we review that proposal. We ask for input from the community on exactly what they're looking for and what they think of the proposals that we are making based on what the governor has on the table. And we ask for input through the budget thought exchange and gather feedback and look at those trends that I've mentioned tonight. We advocate along the way and work with our legislators to advocate for more resources for full funding of foundation aid and a lot of different groups. Fight for Brighton has been so key to that in our community, and we continue that conversation. We've been meeting with legislators every day, every other day for the past several weeks, having a conversation about the governor's proposal, what it means to us, what it would mean to Brighton and what we think they should be thinking about differently. I'll give you an example. There's a bill to raise the limit on reserve funds that's really important for us to be paying attention to and talking to legislators about because, based on the current federal bailout potential for revenue to be coming to school districts, there needs to be a way to plan for the use of that money over time and be able to both spend it based on what it is supposed to be spent on, but recognize that not all of those expenses will go away this year. We may have things we need to spend on in two years, in a year, and we need to be able to use reserves. So we pay attention to all those pieces of legislation to give us the flexibility to really protect resources and protect program over time. And then we ask for more input along the way as well, and we'll continue to do that. We have another community budget forum coming up and we'll be working with the community on the 17th to ask for more feedback based on tonight's presentation and throughout the process. And we meet with lots of different groups and present to anybody who will have us in to present to their group, anybody who will listen to it, and we gather feedback from each of those meetings, too. We react, we discuss, we refine plans, we share, and we ask for input again. It's a constant iterative process of asking for more feedback and then adjusting our plans along the way. And we have to react to the types of things that are coming up in the budget process, the different legislation that is happening, what legislators are telling us, et cetera. And then finally, the Assembly and the Senate make their proposals and they reach an agreement with the governor on a budget that has a pretty significant impact on our spending plan. I think what we're trying to say to you this year, though, is we can't wait for that. We can't wait for that promise to perhaps be dangled, what will be, what will it look like? We need to make plans now and provide people with answers, safety and security in knowing what it will look like for next year. And I will say multiple times, our plan is for it to be five days a week next year of in-person instruction, and this spending plan reflects that. That is absolutely the intention going into next year, and we're very hopeful that we can do what we need to do to make sure that that happens along the way. So what we think we know now, a couple of key points that we want to mention to you. First of all, the governor proposed a budget that concerns us in two significant ways. One is around foundation aid, the other is around the collapse of the expense-based aids into one formula-driven category. Where our understanding from the Assembly and Senate is that that will not happen, that will not be a part of either one of their proposals, and they simply won't allow a budget to be agreed to that has that collapse of the categories. And the simplest way to explain this to people is the transportation aid is an expense-based aid, right? We get aid the next year based on what we spend this year. And our spending in that category is different than, say, Pittsburgh's or Russian Rata or Gateschild or anybody else. So you get reimbursed for the mileage that you drive based on your needs in your district. It's a very fair way to reimburse people for their expense and essentially level the playing field between districts. The governor's proposal would get rid of that and put it all into one block grant, one formula, pretty nebulous, that it could be politically manipulated. Sounds familiar? That's because that's the foundation aid formula, that's exactly what that is, and it is politically manipulated every year. It's not based on, it's not right now being based on an actual expense and a reimbursement for that. Now, it was supposed to be, but that formula, as we know and have explained for years, gets played with every single year. Aid will be a challenge, we know that because, again, forty-nine and a half percent is not all of a sudden going to become a hundred percent. But we will likely get more than the forty-nine, forty-nine and a half percent. We feel good about that. And again, I want to thank Senator Cooney and Assembly Member Clark for their bill that had...
Hey Kevin, we lost your audio, you're kind of going in and out and then we lost you. And we can't, we can't hear you. We can read, but we can't hear you.
The universe isn't ready for the budget presentation, clearly.
We can't hear. Not sure why. You're unmuted on the screen, on our screen, but you just went out. Audio.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Couldn't tell you why that happened, I think somebody just sabotaged it, didn't want to hear this presentation, so. I hate to even say where, what's the last thing you heard, or you might skip to the end, but.
The prudent and responsible moving to full day K.
All right, perfect. So anyways, the point is that we have been prudent in our planning and have rainy day funds that we feel like we can responsibly use and plan over time for the use of those reserves to support program. Full-day kindergarten was promised and it's a priority, and it's a priority in this proposal. Families are counting on that, it's why we built a building or significantly remodeled the building, I should say, and built classroom space, and we should be fulfilling that promise to the community, both from the capital project side, but the program side and what parents are counting on. Our community does not want to exceed the cap, that's very clear, and we do not want to reduce services, nor does the community want to reduce services. So how do you marry those two things? Lack of resources to pay for those services and desire to keep the services, et cetera. We have to look at other ways to utilize our resources and using the rainy day funds are a good way to do that, and we feel like we could be responsible in that. We know that we need to do everything we can to have students in school five days a week. We're planning for that, not just for September, but actually now in the process of planning for some type of return this year. It will depend on multiple factors, one being the infection rate being about a third of what it is right now, that daily infection rate, but also our ability to logistically plan with whatever the requirements will be for that. So distance is still the primary issue and distance of six feet between people is still what is keeping us in the hybrid model. But our principles are working furiously and other teams are working on developing plans so that if we got any kind of green light, we'd be able to go out to the community and say, here's what we can do now, what do you think? Our community should expect that within about a week or so, we are going to be going out and asking them, what are their thoughts right now on reopening? What kind of program would they be up for? What would their choice be? And not an open-ended question, but a very clear, here's what we think it would look like. Would you be in, would you be out? What would that mean? That doesn't mean that reopening is imminent. We wish that it could be, but right now, again, those other factors have to change, both from the Health Department, but also the infection rate has to go way down for that to be able to happen. And again, we recognize in the budget process, more than ever, I need for stability and predictability in doing this proposal tonight. All right, can you not hear me again now?
I can hear you.
I'm sorry, we can hear you.
Okay. I feel like when the slides switch, for some reason, the speaker is changing on my computer, I have no idea why. So anyways, we'll keep moving. I just need you to give me a high sign mark and give me a wave if you can't hear me. Takeaways from the community feedback against significant themes. Don't cut reopen schools, full-day kindergarten, don't exceed the cap, fight for it, keep advocating for it. So we're not backing off of that and saying that it's okay to just use reserves and hopefully the aid will catch up. We're still out there piling the pavement, asking for that. So in this preliminary budget proposal, those themes are reflected in the fact that we believe we are meeting and exceeding state mandate, it's supporting every child along the spectrum, not reducing programming that way, preserving our core educational programs, the ones that are valued by the community by not making reductions, and respecting our taxpayers and honoring our commitments by proposing that we include full-day kindergarten in our budget proposal and continue to think about and make sure that we're under the cap and utilizing the resources that people provided to us. Next slide, please, Lou. Louis, all ears.
Great, good evening. So with that introduction, we have an update from the financial. The next several slides are very similar to what we presented in January and gives the Board of Education an overview of where we are, big picture financially. So as we did before, we break it down by function first, or I'm sorry, by object first, and see what the trends are. The subsequent slides will disaggregate this a little bit more so you see what's contributing to each of the object classifications. Overall, we're at a 5.3% increase in spending, and that's reflective of 4.2% in operations and just under a million dollars or 1.1% in capital. A portion of that is certainly full-day kindergarten, as Dr. McGowan spoke to. So first, a slide that you haven't seen before is a breakdown of our revenues and financing sources. So as we look at the pie chart on the left-hand side, we see that property taxes, really that should be combined with fund balance. So we're almost at seventy percent of property taxes, fund balancers, you know, resources that have been previously taxed before. So as we look at other sources that will hopefully help offset the property burden long-term, we look at a foundation aid, and that's really our only unrestricted revenue where we have potential for significant growth. We're only going to see growth in the expense-based aids if we spend more. So that's not a great opportunity to reduce that burden on local property taxes. And then we look at local sources. A lot of that is also expense-based and supports that we provide to private and parochial schools, but sales tax is the primary driver in that, and we have seen some growth in that. And we hope to see some growth as the economy recovers. So this is a big, big picture, the tax burden of the local, and as we get more sources from other areas, especially foundation aid, we have to look at our reliance on fund balance and reserves. We are financially strong right now, we can weather the storm, but we do have to be very diligent about supplanting that reliance on fund balance with the reoccurring revenues, as Dr. McGowan suggested. So we look at opportunity for new funding for the 2021 budget. We have a graph here that shows where the new money is coming from or new financing sources. So when we look at local sources, that 314,000 is primarily sales tax. We were very conservative in estimating the impact on sales tax with the pandemic. We've, actual revenues have exceeded projections, so we have a little bit of fund balance coming in this year, and then we can readjust that, as Dr. McGowan talked about, looking at that budget to actual and then recalibrating what our baseline assumptions are. We are proposing to use $685,000 of fund balance and reserves. These, this past year in 1920, we ended the year with savings and surplus that we set aside for use in the future years, and this year, we're trending very well, as the Board of Education will see in the financial report. So I'm confident in recommending an increase, a use of fund balance and reserves to be able to implement the program that we want, and then also with the understanding that, you know, we're going to look at opportunities to reduce our reliance of those in the future years. We look at tax levy from the capital, that's $706,000. So we have honored the commitment to the community and stayed under that 2% impact of property taxes, and you'll see that on a subsequent slide. Expense-based aids, $866,000. So that's money that we spent that we're being reimbursed with coming into the next year. And then tax levy for general operations, less than $900,000 of new money to support inflationary costs and other mandated services and growth in those services. And then we have an infusion of aid with full-day K conversion, so we're fully maximizing that, and we're putting together a plan that as that weans down and the funding cliff for that, that will be pushing that into local tax revenue and/or other financing, financing sources. So with that preview of the revenue and financing sources, again, we disaggregate the object level expenditures, very similar to what we talked about in the preliminary budget in January, just updated based on our budget-to-actual projections and other knowns that we know at this point as far as grant allocations, retirements, breakage. And so we see our wages overall going up 3.2%. We have breakage of the administrative ranks, so we have some reductions there. When we roll forward our teaching and instructional expenditures, we consider the contracts that are in place. We also consider the breakage, we consider the chargebacks and the new positions that we're adding, whether it be for mandated, mandated services like E and L, speech, or, and certainly full-day kindergarten. And then we look at non-certificated, you see increases there that are also contributed to contractual increases, but we're also beefing up our nursing support as we did this year. I expect that that's going to continue. Some of the other teaching assistance and teacher's aid with implementation of full-day kindergarten program. So we're adjusting to those, and overall, 3.2% in our salary wages. Then we look at our benefits and we look at health insurance as the primary expense. We're factoring in trends, we're factoring selection mix, and certainly new positions that are coming in. We need to budget for increased participation in that. Retirement, again, we look at budget-to-actual on that, where we are, where we see the rates projected to increase in this upcoming year, both from the teacher's retirement system and the employee's retirement system. Those are state-level systems that they set the contribution rates, and we're paying a percentage of the salaries. So as we see rates go up and we see salaries go up, we would expect that our pension contributions would also increase. Payroll taxes, again, looking at budget-to-actual, so a little bit less than what actual salaries are going up. And then other benefits, unemployment, we do expect to increase a little bit, but overall, 6.1% projected increase in benefits. The impact of those staffing assumptions on elementary class size, you could see where we're projecting a full-day kindergarten. Based on our projections, we're expecting thirteen classes of full-day kindergarten, and that's what we're planning for, along with the support services to fully implement a full, to fully implement full-day kindergarten program. And then we look at tweaks within the class sizes within grades one through five, and you could see the analysis on the right, if we were to add one teacher, if we were to take one teacher away, we think we've, we've put forth a reasonable proposal here, not ideal, but it's reasonable considering the resources that are available. Then we look at 10% of our spending is within BOCES. A lot of those are the shared services and we disaggregate those, this is at the functional level, and we look at business and technology service, primary driver, and we've talked about that over the number, last number of budget presentations, this investment in cybersecurity infrastructure and other technology infrastructure to support the, really the one-to-one program that we've been forced to expedite during the pandemic, catching up that and making sure we allocate the right resources to fully support the program there and to protect our, our infrastructure. Special education, that's a function of enrollment, and Deanna Spagnola's office does a great job of looking at those and forecasting where our needs will be in the upcoming year. Occupational education, we are increasing the number of spots that we have for occupational education, so we do expect more students to be going to OckEd in the upcoming year as we see a growth in enrollment at the secondary level, or making sure that we're funding those sources and providing opportunities for all learners. And then instructional technology, very similar to the business and technology services, these are trying to wean our reliance off of the technology reserve and building up departmental funds for, for, in support of rather, a one-to-one technology program. Transportation, that's a reconciliation to the budget-to-actual. We have had to bring more runs into first student as BOCES continues to struggle with driver shortages and not able to accommodate new runs. So we're bringing some of those services back to first student or to RMT transport. And then 14% of the budget is other supplies, contracts and services. This is the presentation of those that we give to the Board of Education on a monthly basis and try to capture the big-ticket items. We are forecasting increases in utilities, we're expanding our square footage, we'll be operating that, and then we're also seeing increase in utility rates, as most of us are in our, in our own homes. We look at maintenance projects and we're seeing contractual, mostly service and contractual increases in that area. And then going down to some of the other big ones, we've maintained flat budgets for school supplies and materials. Some equipment needs are coming due, musical instruments that we've deferred, other science equipment, and so we see an increase in equipment spending within the school budgets. Special education contracts and tuitions, again, that's a function of student needs and mandated services, so we need some adjustment there to fund where we're projecting this year's expense to be. And then contract transportation has a contractual adjustment equal to CPI, and then it will be some increased cost with transportation as we add more routes for Council Rock and full-day K, partially offset by the reduction of midday runs that we pay for now with the half-day kindergarten program. So debt services, we talked about, 2020, 21, 22 is the year where we achieve stability from the 2017 capital improvement project. So you see, we've hit the tax levy impact, the net levy impact, just over a million dollars. That's the 2% that was already funded, at least half a million dollars of that was funded in advance of this full debt service. So we had been planning for that over a number of years, and we'll see stability in that over, over the next several years. And where you see our actual impact and levy decrease below the green line, that's our opportunity for reinvestment in capital in the next phase to continue to invest in our buildings, maintaining our infrastructure and as well as improving instructional models. So we talked about this before, I just added some of the components of the personnel costs so everyone can see the, the commitment that we're, we're putting forward for full-day kindergarten and the resources that are being allocated to do it the right way. So something you've seen before and requires a long-term plan. We've been working with the Audit Committee and present, in looking at this and developing the long-term financing strategies to implement this over the three-year period. to, uh, implement this over the three-year period where the full day kindergarten, uh, aid reduces or weans off. Tax cap calculation, the board approved this, uh, at the last meeting. There was a minor tweak to it, uh, change in, in pilots. But generally you see the formula here. This is the comptroller's worksheet and overall we're at a two point eight five percent. And that's what we're proposing in the preliminary budget to, um, to stay within the tax gap, but be right at the tax cap limit. A big portion of that is the, um, the net levy and P pack, the one point seven million dollars that we tried to project at, at the point of referendum, uh, when we presented the two thousand and fifteen Capital Improvement Project. Along that, we have some scope that we weren't able to achieve in this project that we see, uh, emerging needs. So we'd like to put forth a resolution to the Board of Education at the next meeting. It would be the C I R A, uh, resolution. That's the environmental quality. Um, review or the environmental impact. This is the scope that we're presenting, a drawdown of our capital reserve. Campus construction is still working on a budget, so I don't have a, a proposal, a withdrawal from the capital reserve. But this is the scope that we're presenting to the Board of Education for consideration. Um, we took some credits in this year's project because we were not, uh, the chain, the scope of the, uh, work in the locker rooms changed. So this would be the locker room right above the, uh, the lower gym where we'd be investing in, in showers, new lockers uh, and a, a more comfortable changing space for our student athletes. The site work in the front of the building, there was a lot of damage to that with the construction and the roof work that needed to happen. Uh, we would like to take this opportunity to do that the right way, to, um, re-engineer the front with new pavers, um, and sidewalks. The P A system has been a problem at the high school. We'd like to take the opportunity to do that. We might be able to run that through, through BOSI's, um, beforehand, um, because certainly that is a, a health and safety issue. What has deteriorated more quickly than, than was anticipated is the rehabilitation of the mechanical systems within the pool and the pool, pool bleachers. Um, that's a tough environment for mechanical systems with, with the chlorine and the, uh, the humidity in that area. So we do need to address that, uh, to maintain our, uh, the mechanical systems there. And then we also have the opportunity to improve the filtration systems within the pool. Uh, one of the items that was on our, our standard replacement list was the stadium lights with L E D. That's something that would be on a contract to be an energy saving, but it also set that up for, um, you know, long-term maintenance over, over these next ten to fifteen years. Uh, we do have, and we've been working with a donor on investment in the maker space within the high school. So we'd like to pursue that, continue to pursue that. And then the roof replacement at the middle school, as we were, um, engaged in construction or working in construction in, in certain areas, we discovered a portion of the roof that was in, in rough condition and that needed to be bumped up on our, on our priority list. So that's a general overview of the scope that we're proposing, um, to be paid for with existing capital reserve dollars. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. McGowan.
Lou, thanks so much. You really own those numbers in a way that provides such great in-depth analysis and helps people really understand uh, where the revenue is, but really more importantly, in a spending plan where the spending is and appreciate you walking through the finances for us. And listen, I know we say this, but it, it can never be said often enough. Your financial stewardship and, uh, leadership in this area just is irreplaceable. And so thank you very much for all that you do to protect the community's resources and provide for us the resources we need to do the right things by kids. So thank you very much for that. Uh, again, a, as Lou detailed, uh, in the previous slides, this is a total spending plan of eighty-seven point three million dollars, which would be an increase of five point three percent, four point two in operations and the one point one percent in capital. And it really does maintain our blueprint priorities. It's mental health and wellness and support, support in that area. Rigor for all students, diversity and equity, which has been key to our work, uh, this year and really remained along with reopening the primary focus of the blueprint plan in this year. But we never let go of the other areas and they will continue to be a focus for us and in the priorities in future years of the blueprint, this spending plan supports that. It really does respond to all of the mandated increases in spending and maintains the program, this great, great program that has been built over many, many years in both the academic but also extracurricular opportunity areas for kids. We're not reducing any of those. And we continue to support that great work that's happened. It does implement the full day kindergarten program and we will send that notice out to families tomorrow. Following any discussion that you'd like to continue to have about that. And, uh, certainly if you're in support of this tonight, at least, of course, we're, you know, take a vote, but through the discussion portion, we'd like to make sure families know that full day kindergarten is included right now in our budget proposal and provide that stability for them. It does leverage the strength of current available resources and Lou did such a great job of explaining how we could financially weather the storm and utilize the resources, uh, that we have available to us to do that. It complies with the cap. So in other words, yes, we would be maintaining program, full day kindergarten and not going over the cap, which is the feedback that we received from people and honors that tax impact of the facility improvement project, the two thousand and seventeen voter-approved project. Essentially a spending plan, as Lou often points out to us, communicates a lot about who you are when you reflect your priorities and your spending. And this does reflect what we value and the programs that we value for kids and this notion of maintaining the excellence that has been built over time for all children in our community. Next slide, please. Next steps in the process, of course, the community budget forum on the seventeenth, executive project proposal on the twenty-third, budget adoption at your meeting on the thirteenth of April. The hearing is on the eleventh and the budget vote, of course, is on the eighteenth. No word on any potential for spaghetti from Quanis? I'm guessing that's not happening this year, unfortunately, but the budget vote, of course, on the eighteenth. We are planning on that looking like a normal budget vote. So we have not received any information from the state. We've been asking since about October, actually, about absentee ballots and about how that might work. And our guess is that one change that will be made is that absentee ballots will be available, uh, with COVID simply being a very, uh, simple reason for requesting an absentee ballot. So they're trying to make that less complicated. And they've reduced the number of signatures required for Board of Education candidates, uh, to run the petition requirement that was just signed by the governor today. So if there are any candidates out there, we'll get that information out to them immediately. Also, it has changed that number. Uh, but there is no other information and so we're told as school districts to operate under the current law regarding voting, which would be the typical voting that we've done every year. We'll continue to keep people posted if anything changes in that regard. Any questions from the board?
Does anybody have anything specific they'd like to ask about tonight? Uh, what we've seen, it's, uh, it's not new information to the board. Uh, we've been discussing the pieces of this for quite some time. Uh, it's the first time we've had it all put together in the detail, uh, that was presented and, um, I guess Kevin, one, just procedural, just to re, just to reiterate and remind folks, um, the idea that you asked about full day K, for example, uh, the budget right now in its entirety, the budget that we approve to present to the voters, we, we aren't scheduled to approve that, vote on it and approve it till April thirteenth. But what you're asking, I think, tonight is if there are any objections from any of the board members with regard to generally what we just saw and the concept of opening full day K as originally planned, that we should discuss that currently. Um, but procedurally for the public moving forward, you know, we do have a budget forum next Wednesday, the seventeenth at one P M on Zoom. Uh, our next board meeting on the twenty-third of March at seven P M. Uh, that would be normally your executive budget proposal that would be further refined and, and defined. And then at the April thirteenth meeting, we would then be expected to approve that budget in its entirety.
Right. And, and, and so a couple of benchmarks in there, the state budget should be finalized by April first. And so that's why the, your approval of the budget that gets then presented to taxpayers happens April thirteenth, because we make adjustments based on whatever that revenue picture might be. But we're trying to say early in the process that this is the proposal. This is what it's going to look like. This is where we're at right now. And the procedural question about kindergarten is an interesting one. The community doesn't, um, vote on the implementation of an instructional program, which is what kindergarten is. Now, other districts have had referendums, they've had different ways to go about this. That's never been a part of our conversation, even the vote on the capital project. In two thousand and seventeen, we tried to make clear is not, it's not a vote on whether or not we should have full day kindergarten. However, the space was intended in large for, for full day kindergarten. So it certainly could be interpreted uh, by a community member as an up or down on full day K. But, uh, the spending plan, including it in the spending plan is essentially presenting to the community, this is included in it. This is what we're spending the money on. You're not giving an up or down on full day K as a separate program, but on the entire, um, entire spending plan. Procedurally for you, this is a, this is, you know, at this point in the budget process is an information share with the board. Here's where, where we are in the process and with the community. Here are the numbers as they stand right now. Here's what our plan is and we are including full day K in our plan. And for the board to simply say in, in a public meeting format, if we need to be looking differently at something and need to be making adjustments, now's the time, a-again, fully transparently with the community to say, you know what, we, we're not, we're not too keen with that right now. We need to reexamine that, but, um, our, our sense is, because this has also been a big priority for you, that this is the direction that everybody's comfortable going. But now would be the time definitely to talk about that as well.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks for the clarification. And as you said, uh, we, you know, we, we've been party to this discussion all along and we've had this material provided to us all along and we have been in agreement all along. Uh, and I don't know, I'm opening the floor to any board members who wish to speak. Uh, I, I, I think we're all comfortable moving forward with generally with what we've seen. I think we all have expressed our commitment to opening the full day kindergarten program as we had originally planned. And, uh, the other items that have been, uh, laid out, uh, does anyone have anything that they wanted to ask further or add to that, uh, from the board?
I, I would just say that the, the finer points that, the finer points that were laid out, which is we stay under the tax cap, we do as we said we were going to do with full day K. We continue to advocate the meetings you had, I think in the past week, you, Kevin and others, Mark, uh, with, with, uh, both Senator Cooney, uh, Cooney and, and also Sarah Clark, Assemblyperson Sarah Clark. All those things are that constant advocacy, you know, and however, I just think those things were all the critical things that we said we had to do. I suppose it's possible we could get a curve ball out of the budget, but none of us thinks that's going to happen. So we should be all set there. But we're doing what we said we were going to do and we're going to continue to push to get kids back into school. So.
Thank you. Karen, you had something?
It's along those same lines. You know, I'm a hundred percent behind the preliminary budget. This is the right time for full day K. It's what we promised to our community. And we can move forward with this because we made some really hard decisions in the past couple of years, right? We made the hard cuts and that puts us where we are today. So, you know, sometimes I hear us say we're in a strong financial position, but we're in that strong financial disposition because we made those hard decisions, right? That's how we can move forward with this programming. So here we are. It's, it's the right thing to do.
Yeah. And, and you know, the, the terminology is, is tricky because we see, you, you're absolutely right. I, I don't want to diminish anything you just said about a strong financial position. It's not strong in the sense that, you know, a household might look at, hey, I've got money put aside for college. We can go on a vacation and we're not really worried about what bills are coming out of our account. It's, it's, it's not the same thing for us. Strong financial position means that we're continuing to be very careful, we can continue to look for efficiencies, continue to be thoughtful about that, but that it's reasonable to say, you know, we're not taking a chance and saying we can spend this now, knowing that we can over time make sure that we have sustained revenues to, to cover that. I don't want to, I don't want to ever give the community the impression that, what are they, what are they? They've been sitting on like big, you know, piles of money for all these years while we're actually, but not at all. It's simply because as you said, hard choices have been made. We've been really thoughtful and planful about this and conservative in, in our spending. And that allows us to just provide the stability. It's not allowing though for growing programs. So we're not talking about that. We're not talking about adding anything. There's nothing in there that is an add. This is how do we maintain who we are.
Well, and Kevin, too, to add to that, until Lou clearly, uh, showed this and anyone who would like to look at the charts and graphs that he posted, it, it, it's, it's a precarious position. It's a short-term position. We've decided that the importance of those priorities, uh, you know, carries more weight than making further reductions at this point in time, knowing that we will have to deal with these as we move forward over the next few years. And the large unknown is what the state will do with the, with their foundation aid budget and the allocation will be provided. We've made estimates, we've made judgments, what we believe to be true, but the long-term, the medium and long-term, we have strategies, but that revenue piece from New York State has to be fixed and that's what we continue to work on. The other element that we, we just, we know, but we don't know, uh, the, the COVID relief plan, the latest one that is currently sitting in the House of Representatives for them to hopefully approve the Senate-approved plan. We know there's a large allocation of dollars that will come to Brighton, relatively large, let's say. We don't know exactly how much in the final, but the concern and the worry is if the governor and his budget, his final budget supplants all or most of that money, then it becomes a one-shot deal again. And we are in a hole automatically beginning next year, uh, because that money will be taken away and we'll start at a lower base. So it's a real, it's a difficult position. I think we continue to take stock on all this and we continue to plan. Uh, hopefully this is going to work out that the federal money is going to provide true relief from some of the COVID pandemic learning expenses, reopening our buildings and providing additional relief in terms of, uh, you know, uh, revenue, operating revenue, if you will. So we continue to watch that and work with our legislators on that and we'll keep the public posted. But for right now, I, you know, I think we're all comfortable with what Lou has presented and how we've gone about it and, uh, unless anybody has anything else, I think we're ready to keep moving forward.
Great. Thanks, everyone.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. We will move on to, uh, principal reports this evening. We've kind of morphed this meeting into a couple of different pieces. So we will have some, uh, prin- principal reports. We'll start out with, uh, Council Rock Primary School and Principal Matt Tappin.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, let me pull up my presentation. So let's see. All right. Well, we are very excited to be entering into March. So, uh, the first piece that I have, second steps is our social emotional program, um, that we instituted about two years ago, three years ago. Um, led by our counselors, Kim Ball and Katara Reedhead. Well, this year, uh, with the hybrid learning and the remote learning, what made most sense was for this to be mostly remote. Um, so they are recording lessons, sending out lessons through Seesaw and really reaching kids through that. However, uh, in February, they held second step live sessions for our kindergartners, first graders and second graders. Um, and recurring themes or recurring characters in their videos are, uh, Puppy and Snail. And they made, um, some great appearances. We had three different, uh, half-hour sessions and we had between sixty and seventy-five students and parents on for each of those, which was a great turnout. Um, and I just have to tell you, the wonder and awe when Puppy and Snail appeared were palpable. Um, it was really fun. The kids were enjoying it. But more importantly, they were really, uh, our counselors were talking about how to manage stress. And, um, it was incredible what our youngest learners, kindergarten first and second graders have in their toolbox, uh, for managing stress and knowing how to put words with their feelings and, um, really understanding what, uh, what will help them personally, um, through the lessons and then through reflection. So it was really exciting and thanks to our entire mental health staff for their support, um, but particularly Katara Reedhead and Kim Ball for that. So I know that Dr. Gasparino was on at one point, um, and there was a lot of excitement about the puppets and about seeing things live. So. Um, our extended studies teachers, Andrea Yaman and Judy Wegman, um, are continuing with, um, reaching out to children both in the hybrid land and in remote, uh, and put together the Council Rock Observer. So this was a challenge for kids to get outside in the winter and really look at wonder and awe and, um, gather data through all their senses and strive for accuracy, some of our habits of mind that we are focusing on. And these are just some examples of some of the great work that kids turned in and, um, Andrea Yaman put it together. And it's been featured in My Happen Time. So thanks to all the students who, uh, submitted. But also thanks to, uh, Andrea Yaman for putting all of that together for us and then being able to share it with parents. Uh, speaking of habits of mind, uh, we were invited, uh, a team, I led the team, but, um, a team of, uh, representatives from our school to present at the International Habits of Mind Monthly Meeting. They have a monthly Zoom meeting. Um, and there were several schools represented, some looking to be certified, uh, as an international. As an international habit of mind school institute. As we were, and so we shared our story and our process and took questions. And it was just really a great opportunity. I was noting afterwards that, you know, sometimes during the pandemic, you don't feel great about everything you're doing because it's not normal. Doesn't feel like we're, you know, moving forward and to take that time and reflect on where we've been over the last five to seven years and see where we are today. And then really talking a lot about how we've used habits of mind through the pandemic to. To keep kids connected and to keep kids moving and as adults especially, using those habits of mine. It was really. An honor to be able to do that and then also a real pleasure to be able to do that. And within there are Ben Akallik and Art Costa, who are the authors of the Habits of Mind, so. And at the end, we even art thanked all the schools and said he was brought to tears because. He was so touched by how his work and their work had affected all the children that were involved. So it was really an honor to be able to do that. At Council Rock, we celebrated Black History Month all through the month of February. Mrs. Jeffries and I read a book each day that we were in session and shared it on Seesaw. And this is just a list of the books that we shared and a couple of the pictures. They were books either that were written or illustrated by African American or. And or featured black or brown characters as the main character to make sure that students were seen, and we got a lot of really great response from. Families about that and really just being able to see see some great examples through books. Another project that we've been doing for a long time, actually, for the for 15, this is the 15th year that Judy Wegman started it. And Andrea Yaman has joined on, but our second graders are offered, it's a volunteer opportunity to participate in a biography online project. And this year, we had over 60 second graders, both hybrid and remote participate. And of course, focus was on changemakers. And everything is exclusively online. You know, when she started this, it was very unique and especially at our level. Now it seems kind of run of the mill that, you know, things can be done online, but it's through a blog format. And it lasts about six weeks with a reading and writing assignment each week, and everyone that submits. Gets a response from either Ms. Wegman or Ms. Yaman, Mrs. Yaman. And this is just an example of one of the. One of the assignments and then some sample responses, and I won't read them to you, but they read about Harriet Tubman. And then they choose a biography of someone else to read, and they have to compare and contrast how they're. Different or similar from Harriet Tubman, thinking about their accomplishments and challenges and their habits of mind, and then. She really, they added this, how might these two become friends or why might they become friends if they had a chance to meet? And I think the the students' intuitions are really, really awesome, you know, how some of these modern day. Biographies and dignitaries are similar to Harriet Tubman and different how they might or might not. Be friends with her when, if they were alive at the same time. So if you have a chance, go and read them. They're very insightful. Tomorrow, we celebrate our Brighton Believes Day, and we will be doing that via. The remote, so all of our students are remote tomorrow, and instructions are going to be given via Seesaw with our Second Steps lessons. Our kindergarten and first graders now report on this afterwards. After it actually happens, but our kindergartners and first graders are going to be encouraged to make cards for some local nursing homes. And our second graders are going to be doing some work for Lollipop Farm and for the animals that are there. Next weekend, daylight savings begins. I know it's an odd one, but it certainly affects our students. It probably affects everyone a lot, but our students come in. Feeling very different on those days afterwards, so just a reminder. And then at the end of the month, just a reminder, no school spring recess, so. Any questions?
Thank you very much, man. It is hard to believe that daylight saving time is coming up this weekend, right? So thanks for the reminder, community service, I guess. French Road and Dr. Rio.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I hope you're doing well. I'm happy to share some of our updates today from French Road. And just thought this was great and we would celebrate the things that our kids have been doing in music class, six feet apart, being socially distanced. So we've had to make a lot of changes this year. Due to the singing and some of the typical things that we would do with our kids, but. Which what's great is they're still having a lot of fun. So Boom Whackers are still a popular item that can be used to make music. Or to choreograph a song to Star Wars, so just some kids having fun from six feet apart. And we're getting into our science units more, which is great. We had a slow start with science at the beginning of the year, but we are kicking it up and our Smithsonian units are in action. With our students with some modifications, whether it is. Through some videos that show some of the things that we typically do live and in person or hands on for kids, but there still are lots of good opportunities for them to be hands on. And here are some pictures of some fourth graders in Ms. Colbert's class engaging in our motion. Unit. How does motion energy change in a collision? And they try lots of different ways as they look. Through light and through liquid and all sorts of states matter and look at how the energy changes and. It was great seeing them still engage with this, even though it looked a bit different through COVID. And just to share an update, as of this week, all of our French Road students have access. To their own individual school iPad, so we have gone one to one for all of our French Road kids. Some of our remote students who have been home learning this year don't have. An iPad, and that's okay. That was by choice because they've already been set up for the year and feel good about what they're doing, but all of our kids who are in the building have an iPad, which has been really helpful. In moving forward with some consistency and helping support our kids on the asynchronous days and their fully remote days, but. Big thanks to our tech department and our building tech, Eric Christensen, who really helped us pull that off at French Road. And then it was our Read Across America Day at FRES, and some people who are in this very Zoom with us right now. Were part of that, and this is not a representation of everyone's pictures, but just some of the pictures. Of our guest readers at FRES. And typically, as you know, our guest readers come to French Road and read in the classroom with kids, but it really still was a treat for our kids to have. These guest readers come to their classroom Zooms last Wednesday and read some books, and the kids thought it was an awesome time. And it was nice to hear from different people around the school district and even around the community. To connect with our students. So thank you to everyone who was able to participate in that, and it was still a success, even though it looked a bit different this year. I wanted to revisit something that I shared a little bit at. Our February board meeting, but that was our work around Black History Month, and now we have finished projects to share, so I wanted to come back and share some of that with everyone, but. Our real goal was to help our students to understand the importance of Black History Month and think about building empathy towards other humans. And really, really, in the end, we want them to think about how to stand up for what's right and then how to take action. And be a changemaker, which is kind of what our focus was on through Black History Month, but also will carry us right into Brighton Believes Day as well. So as a reminder for this. Project for the the school-wide project, every homeroom in the school. Took an opportunity to learn about a black individual that has impacted the community or currently does or has in the past. And then we've set up a changemaker walk throughout the school. We've incorporated our remote kids also, so they were able to be part of this, and I've just shared some of the pictures here. This week I'll share with the FRES community and parents. A link to every single class project. So we have a document that links every single homeroom to the work that they did, whether it was in person or remote. And I shared a few of the in-person samples. So as you're walking around the school, there's different ways that students can engage with the. Information around the school depending. Some of them, as you can see here. Are have QR codes, so that when you click on that with your phone or an iPad, you'll get to hear more information that's put together by the students in that class. Some of them are facts or pictures. So many, I mean, honestly, there are over 40 displays around the school, and they are simply fantastic. They are all different people. And the kids are talking about this. This is literally the best part is kids are talking about it to each other every single day. Today I passed. A third grade class on one side of the school and a fifth grade class on the other side, walking around, leaving positive thoughts to. With positive feedback to the students who created the projects and saying what they learned, and the kids are talking about it, and I walked past a group of kids that were outside. Of Mrs. Hope's class by the Barack Obama display, and they were making connection after connection to other people that they had walked past around the school. And it's just phenomenal. It just gives you goosebumps because it's just what we wanted our kids to be doing, and it looks great. And to follow up with that, we are, we have been working towards a changemaker change challenge at FRES. That's a mouthful to say, but. It sounds fancy, so, but we've asked kids to bring in change right up until today. Today was the last day. In hopes of raising $500 in change for Food Link and also to show kids how they can take action to help someone. Or in the community, and that kind of followed along with our Black History Month work, and we'll tie into the work that we're doing tomorrow on Brighton Believes Day. And I don't want to give it away, but I really don't know if too many kids are watching the board meeting right now, but we have far surpassed our $500 goal. And I'll tell the kids tomorrow at our schoolwide assembly. So we will be having a schoolwide dance party later in the week, which should be pretty awesome. This is a picture of Ms. Eden's class, who this class alone took it upon themselves to challenge themselves. To raise more money than they thought they ever could, and this class, this is one half of the class, but the class as a whole alone raised over $400, so. That was pretty impressive right there. And then upcoming events, we have Brighton Believes Day coming up tomorrow. We'll have we'll have a schoolwide assembly. On changemakers with the Rochester Museum and Science Center, and that will continue our focus for the rest of the day, so stay tuned. More to come about that next month. We are hosting our Science and Social Studies Fair. Virtually this year, so that will be on March 24th, and information's been shared with our FRES families, and we look forward to seeing the projects that the kids put together. And we have our schools close for spring recess, and then in April, we have a special education meeting with the principal. And that's it for FRES.
Okay, Allison, fantastic. Thank you. We do appreciate that. Look at the French Road. Next up this evening, Jim Nunez and 12 Corners Middle School.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having me, and I will share my screen. Well, I will say that it was quite fun reading to the fifth grade class, Read Around America. There it was. Nice to be in front of a group of students, reading to them, take me back to the days when I taught fifth grade, so it was quite fun and getting to meet them and all their interesting questions that they had. Knowing that they'd become the TCMS next year, so it was quite fun. Doing that. So. Here we are. And so first, I'd like to start off by recognizing TCMS and our fifth re designation as a school to watch. We're really excited about receiving this designation. It is our sixth overall, including our initial designation back when we first got it, so we're very excited about that. And you know, the true work in this re designation goes through the work that Rob Thomas has done. In his time as principal at TCMS, so I would be remiss not to recognize him and his efforts. Relaying the foundation and the great work that TCMS has done over the years. So for me, I'll be quite honored and humble when we get our sixth re designation in three years, and I'll be able to take full credit for that re designation moving forward. But it was quite interesting, the process going through with the paperwork. And the meetings that went through it, and I will say it was very nice working with the people from schools to watch and their assistance of me moving forward to the process, so it's very appreciative of that. Next, I'd like to recognize our TCMS science team who won the US Department of Energy. Science Bowl competition, was coached by Calvin Knight. And some of our students that were on that team were Latavian Alexander, Arnab Sharma, Krishna Tengarala, Cameron McFadden Olivera and Eli Gray. And for their efforts, TCMS will be recognized with a $500. Grant in their recognition. They will be moving on to compete at a national level in an online competition for their efforts, and so with this, they have been practicing Saturdays every weekend. For most of this first semester in gaining this recognition, so we're very proud of their efforts. In receiving these accolades. Next up here is. Called the Poetry Mountain, and this is in the classroom for Mrs. Gruner, who is teaching ELA for us. And it stems off of the poem, "The Hill We Climb" by Amanda Gorman. And so students have gone on and shared thoughts and perseverance and how they've overcome the challenges in the COVID year. In dealing with it and moving forward, and so it was really nice to read some of their. Emotions and reactions to their perseverance in the pandemic, and here we see some of them. Where they talk about, you know, even as we fail, we succeed, or even as we felt discouraged, we won. So some of their reactions to them were so powerful and really nice to see, and. The the completion of work will come this Friday when they get through the entire course of the study. And so it's really nice to walk into the classroom and see this work displayed there for them. Next up here, we see some students working in Earth Science, Mr. Kalasi's class. Here, these students are working on timing the rate of liquid going through different particles. And seeing how fast or slow this liquid goes through, depending on the size of the particles in the tube. Here we have math students working with a student teacher, Mrs. Frank from the University of Rochester, who are studying slope. And she found a nice hands-on way to do this with our students while they're measuring steps. To find their linear equation that would translate into assisting them working on the problems that they were solving in class. Here we have our sixth grade students in Mrs. Falter's class, working with artifacts sent over from the Memorial Art Gallery. And our students were really enjoying this project, not only because they were using authentic artifacts, but also knowing that. We were the only school in the county who were privileged enough to get the display from the art from the gallery. So it was nice for our students to have this on display for the week while her sections were through. The the displays and working with them. And here we have other students working with different artifacts from it in different religions as well. This month, we have our Women's History Month displays throughout the the school, and we have nice displays of women in history who have. Contributed greatly to history, and we've also have staff. Reading every morning on the morning show, highlighting the accomplishments of women in history. So we're very proud of that. And here I'd like to show some data that we pulled from our first semester of work. So here it shows how 90% of our students in the hybrid setting are passing their courses. With 73% of our students in the remote sections passing their coursework here. Here below that, you see the breakdown by grade level. In the hybrid setting, we have our sixth grade students passing at a rate of 92%. Followed by seventh grade with 90% and our eighth grade students at 88%. In our remote settings are sixth grader passing at 65%, seventh grade 86% and our eighth grade at 65%. You know, with this information, we're looking at ways to intervene and work with those students in the remote setting to find different ways to connect and see what we can do to better support them. But we're very proud of all of our students and the efforts they've been making throughout the course of the school year to be successful. And to our teachers for the work that they're doing, connecting with them and supporting them along the way. Closing out with some upcoming events, we have the school closure coming up, followed by the end of the third marking period, and then we are currently planning for our New York State assessments in ELA and in math. To be done there in May.
Thank you very much, Jim. We appreciate that. And finishing up this evening, Dr. Tom Hall in Brighton High School. Hey, Tom, are you speaking to us because we can't hear you?
Hello.
Hello.
Sorry, that's my first Zoom, you know, go figure. Our, so we're getting ready for Brighton Believes Day as well tomorrow, and I'm gonna show this at the end, but we've been. Trying to put together ideas. Our culture climate leadership team. Decided we're just gonna do a giant food drive, and this year we're trying to get every single club team. Activity at the high school departments, staff and students and and faculty. and faculty involved and bring in um the various items that you see here for the Brighton food cupboard. Um, we're asking students prepare that for tomorrow and bring them in on their cohort days on Thursday and Friday. Um, so that we can just, you know, fill the entry uh with food for the food cupboard. And that's going to be our our big service project for Brighton believes day. Typically, we would have grade level activities happening all afternoon on the Wednesday. Um, just obviously can't do that this year because of COVID. And uh, we're hoping we'll get back next year, but we also have a great video that about 25 students from different clubs and teams who've helped to put together uh several events in the last three years for us. They sponsor grade level activities. They've helped put together a big bright believes video that we released on Monday, um just explaining what we've done and how it's helped um this the specific organizations in the community. Um, and we're gonna send out some reminders again tomorrow. So zooming into classes, I had a an opportunity to see um in an English 11 class with Mrs. Bonadonna. You can see on the seat there in the picture, uh, it's actually her laptop. Sometimes we'll have an iPad, but it's her laptop. Um, and this student is at home, couldn't be in the classroom that particular day. Um, was quarantined and uh is there discussing, there was another student on the other side that you can't see where the picture is being taken from. And the three of them were having a regular discussion uh with each other. And it was the first time I actually saw it uh happening and uh where the student was pretty much engaged in the lesson like any other kid. That certainly can't happen every time. Um, but it was really neat to see them interacting with the student from home and the kids in the classroom and carrying on great conversations. Um, of course, all of our clubs and activities are meeting via Zoom for the most part right now. This is Friends Rachel, still very active, huge, big meeting that they put together as they were planning their Super Bowl of Hope uh back last month. Uh, great group advised by Mr. Mitchell, great service club. Um, our winter sports season one is just about over. Uh, that's gonna wrap up on uh March 15th, which is next Monday. Um, so all of these sports you see here will be over uh with a kind of a quick season from February to March. Um, and then we've already started our winter sports season two, which is football, our boys volleyball and our girls volleyball teams, uh all practicing, preparing and finishing up on around April 12th, a couple of weeks after our break. For Black History Month, um, our culture climate leadership team, along with the help of several staff members, put together a 21 day challenge. Um, but kind of a modified version for our students. Um, students receive various emails and videos, articles and podcasts from the 21 day challenge uh to hopefully broaden their um views and understanding of how inequity and racism affect our lives in our community, especially in the Rochester area. And also BSU sponsored several different speakers, um including a documentary viewing of July 64 from the 1964 race riots and the students actually had an opportunity to dialogue with the director of that documentary. Program planning continues. Um, excuse me. For the first time ever, because of COVID, we have not had junior seminars or senior, I'm sorry, or sophomore or freshman seminars where kids would come together, you know, in groups of 15, 16, maybe 18 students choosing courses for the following year. This year, the counselors um have made appointments with every single student in the ninth, 10th and 11th grade class and had 20 to 25 minute one-on-one meetings to choose their courses for next year, talk about the future, talk about their hopes and dreams. Um, and it's been really successful. I think students have really enjoyed it. And the counselors have too. And that's one thing that we will probably continue after COVID is over um in terms of how we go about selecting courses. So that finished up um uh the second week uh or just the earlier this week in March. And now we're determining um how many students we have enrolled or wanting to take a particular course. Then we're determining sections, we'll get into staffing and course assignments. And all of that will be wrapped up before the end of March so that Mr. Como can start to build the master schedule for next year, believe it or not. Um, and then course requests will be mailed home to all parents just before the break. And thanks to the middle school for getting our our incoming freshmen uh completely done as well. So student events, a lot of people have been asking, when we, what are we gonna do this spring? You know, once the weather breaks and we can be outside and celebrate. So in addition to graduation, uh, we sent out hold the dates and more uh items will be determined along the way. But from our senior lawn signs to captain gown pickup to reopening open campus for at least our seniors, we're hoping um AP exams, that schedule will be released shortly. There are three different timeframes that you can take APs this year, early May, end of May and early June. So we're just about ready to wrap that up and send it to families. Uh, we're planning a huge uh homecoming car parade. Um, with clubs, teens, activities and seniors being highlighted on Saturday, June 5th at four o'clock. Uh, going from the high school down Wynton, up uh Elmwood, across Lactaville, Westfall, then back to the high school. So get ready for that. We'll have, it'll be all completed in a car um or truck um or uh fire truck, which we might see. Um, we're also renting two large tents, which will be out back of the school for about 10 days from June 10th to June 19th. We'll be doing a variety of activities over those 10 days, including our award ceremony, which would typically be in the auditorium. We are gonna try to do a live award ceremony in the evening out under the tents. More to come, senior ball, um senior bash and banquet event, working with our food service in our senior class. Um, a lot of energy and enthusiasm for that. A modified Spring Fest, we're working executive council on that now. Last day of classes to be determined, we don't know. Um, and Regis exam is not exactly sure. You can see a junior prom will be during that time as well. Uh, graduation on the turf with a rain date in June, the end of June, when we typically have it. Um, and we'll have some individual ceremonies for those students or families who really need that. And then our diploma pickup and summer begins. So again, VHS, don't forget our food drive is uh starting Thursday and Friday. Tomorrow's prep day. For activities starting um in going through the rest of March before the big break. We have a PTSD meeting will be providing special ed parents with college planning and and alternatives to for students who might not go to college and also how to advocate uh for testing accommodations and various things once you get to college. And of course, our budget forms are listed in board meetings and that's about it.
Thank you much, very much, Dr. Hall. And you certainly are Mr. BHS Bruin. So we appreciate the moniker there and uh thank you. Uh, in all seriousness, you know, we have to continue to thank and recognize all four building leaders, but staff, all of our teachers, I mean, to continue to try to provide to make sure the teaching and learning is going on and you continue to innovate, you know, ingenuity, we've used that word so many times this year. And you know, every report that the four of you present to us is new examples all the time of connecting remote learners in all the different subject matter and making it work. And now trying to look at these year end events and try to make those uh really key and and valuable for families and students. And so we, we continue to appreciate everybody's efforts in that regard. So thank you very much. Uh, tonight, we also have our report section uh uh through a number of things. We have our financial reports, uh board you will have already seen in uh the tab uh online. Uh, reports from Lou and Dahlia, budget status report dated January 21. The treasurer's report, January 31st, 2021, including the executive summary. One thing I would point out in that executive summary from Lou, he does go into detail in a couple of paragraphs. On the reliance on fund balance and the short term financing strategies that we are working on that he has talked to us about extensively. We've talked about it at audit committee and he's put that in that executive summary report also. Um, does anyone have any questions or anything further on those reports? And may we have a motion, please, to uh to receive those reports this evening?
Still moved.
Second. Moved by Karen and seconded by Larry. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. That's seven in favor and none opposed. Continuing the upbeat news, we welcome our student representative this evening, Stella. Thank you for joining us.
Hi. So I have a few updates from the students this month. Um, like Dr. Hall said, tomorrow is Brighton believes day and we're doing our giant food drive with all of the clubs that have been helping us. That's really exciting. Um, I'm going to be bringing in some tomatoes on Thursday, so I'm excited for that. Um, I've also heard a lot of people expressing that Brighton's free lunch policy is really helpful and really convenient. So thank you to the administration and our cafeteria staff for working to implement it. I think one major issue that students have been having with our hybrid schedule is the fact that we often have to take multiple tests on the same day. And recently, teachers have been trying to coordinate their schedules to spread out the test, which is really, really helpful, but it's still kind of a persistent issue because a lot of kids have now mentioned that they're taking a test like almost every day they go to school. And I think a couple of solutions that I've heard from the students have been online tests or just eliminating less essential unit tests. And I think we all understand the importance of progress checks, but a lot of students have voiced that when testing feels so frequent, it can negatively impact their mental health. And I think that's a really important thing. I think there are more opinions about this topic on the thought exchange that was posted a couple of weeks ago. So it might be a really good idea to check that out. Um, right now, while some clubs are going really, really strong, like Friends of Rachel and the new winter sports or the fall two sports teams. Um, some of the smaller clubs have been really struggling to have frequent meetings and recruit members since um it's more difficult to recruit members with a hybrid scheduling with some kids being remote. And I think next year it will be really, really important for club leaders and um administrators to focus on recruiting and making sure that clubs have enough events to kind of stay um stay in action. Our teachers have all kind of explained to the students that we have the option to choose between the online and the on paper AP exams um and the different dates. And we've kind of realized that there are pros and cons to each option because sometimes the day is more um reasonable for the class that we're taking. And I think it's important to voice that there's a general consensus among most of the students that we prefer the paper exams unless there's a major um problem with the dates that they fall on. So I know we're working on finalizing that. And I think that our teachers have been really good about listening to our opinions on the AP exams because they're very stressful for a lot of people. That is all I have. So thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Stella. We appreciate your perspective and thanking you. Thank you for bringing it forward and Dr. Hall wrote all those things down. I did see him working and taking stock there. So we appreciate that. Uh, our Board of Education Monroe County School Boards Association Standing Committee reports uh period of time since the last time we report is pretty short. So we don't have a lot to report. There's a couple of updates. Labor relations. Larry, I believe you attended uh my correct on February 24th. Did you attend that?
I did. Um, and it's again, getting into all of the discussions that'll be necessary regarding um how COVID impacts negotiations, what sorts of things will uh teachers need in in terms of relief, accommodations and things like that, um impacts to the school, um both negotiations and just how do we take care of the teachers and the kids? Uh, through all of that, there's some legal pieces to that, of course. And then there's some human pieces to that as well. It was sort of consistent with theme in January and it sort of goes under this large umbrella mark, which is how is COVID affecting everything we're doing? Not just right now, but as we look into the future, so we're better prepared. And as is typical in these situations, a lot more questions asked than answered. But there was good discussion because a lot of uh school districts are trying to figure out how we make sure to take care of teachers, but at the same time, make sure that we're taking care of students as well.
Great. Thank you, Larry, for that report. Um, information exchange uh tomorrow, Julie, I think is.
Well, we meet at noon on Zoom and the topic is code of conduct in a virtual environment. So that should be interesting.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Um, and you you raised a good point. I just want to remind the group you tomorrow on Zoom, one of the things that we've all seen is Monroe County School Boards Association is kind of moving a little bit. Some of the committee work and subcommittee work on some of the other things that we do is gonna move somewhat in person, but they will continue to offer a Zoom option. I think I mentioned to the group that MNT Bank gave a grant to the association uh to invest in uh some new equipment and electronic uh technol- technology to connect to the Bosie server from the remote site. So uh, I think beginning mid, I don't remember which one upcoming, but there is an in-person meeting upcoming. But from now on, whether if you want an intended person, that's fine socially distant and all that. Or if you want to continue on Zoom, you'll have that option also, just a reminder. Uh, Legislative Committee meeting, uh Karen, we met on the third, right? Was that the third?
And it's, I'd say it's largely consistent with what Larry said that uh our our discussion was consistent with the the one that we just reported on two weeks ago. Um, I, I think it was Sherri said it, I wrote it down in quotation marks legislators are ready to legislate again in reference to the situation with the governor's executive orders. I I thought that that was um an apt way to put it in terms of moving forward with our our new normal and um uh but but in it really in the same place, individual legislative appointments have taken place. I think that you and Dr. McGowan were able to meet with Assemblyperson Clark. Am I correct about that?
We did do that, you know, uh, we met as part of the Monroe County School Boards Group with Sarah Clark. And then Kevin and Lou and I, excuse me, had a meeting with Jeremy Cooney. And we'll have some more upcoming. We're also gonna try to figure out a way to invite them in. Uh, they both have expressed the willingness to see more of who and what we are i- i- when that can be done safely. So we'll figure out a way to do that too. But yeah, you you are correct. And you know, you raise a great point without getting into the weeds on the discussion of the governor. How uh the one thing that it does affect us with the governor's current situation is the unknown around the budget and the unknown around all the other things that have to be worked on that right now seem to have gotten put on a back burner. So that could affect budget, it could affect executive orders, it could affect the Department of Health guidance that we've been waiting for. So not to belittle a very significant and important point regarding his personal conduct, let's say alleged, but it could affect how we do our business as we move forward. So we'll keep it, we'll keep us, keep people posted, I guess.
Meeting again on April 7th, moving forward. I'm I'm hoping to be there in person on April 7th, so we'll see how that all pans out.
We will see what happens there. Thank you very much. And and we will, uh, the one thing with Legislative Committee will continue to set up and have local appointments by Zoom with all of our elected officials also. Um, and uh, April 7th, you mentioned that, I'm sorry. Other uh Bosie's, I do have a report. So Sora Sax did submit a Bosie's report. We'll have it in the minutes for a full, complete report. Uh, just quickly, they're taking a look at the number of Bosie's policies and during the review. Uh, our Bosie superintendent Dan White has been involved in uh Bosie's Day with state legislators and Dan is a very active individual, as most of you know, with terms of advocacy, uh, the annual meeting for Bosie's is on Thursday, April 4th. And as always, we are all invited if we would like to attend. So more on that to come. Uh, other board member reports, does anybody uh have anything? It's only been a couple of weeks. But does any other board member have anything that they would wish to report out on in terms of other activities?
Yeah, just so I'd make note of one thing in terms of, we talked last time, Mark, about the construction projects. I did want to note that Lou and the team were over with uh over at Council Rock today. Trying to understand as we begin to unpack everything, or I guess say it differently, pack up everything and start to move out. Making sure that the neighbors on both Babcock and Rowland are taken care of to go through on some of that. And also bring up one other thing that I neglected last time and it is a shout out from Maria Vanette. She's partnered with a couple of local companies that are downsizing a little bit and they have some really nice available furniture. And she's securing that for a number of the schools at virtually no charge. So it's sort of a cost avoidance thing and it's not old furniture. It's nice furniture that we're able to get. So wanted to give a shout out to her as well because that's a savings for us. I mean, we're always looking to to save when we can, but she's developed a good rapport with a couple of local companies to be able to do that on our behalf and secure some really nice furniture.
Thank you, Larry, for bringing it up. You're right. That's a great point. And you know, we did, uh, it comes to mind now that I believe it was after the last time we reported out, but the board held a half day retreat. And um, some may want to weigh in on that. We had part of that half day was uh in person. Uh, all seven of us socially distant masked as we toured Council Rock and then much of the new construction and also the Brighton High School Auditorium. And it was really the first time that we, the seven of us, had been in proximity of each other since uh our retreat last summer when we were greatly distanced. Uh, and then greatly distanced. Uh, and then we didn't have everybody at that one even uh, somewhere on Zoom. So so that was a great, uh, great day uh, to see. A high school auditorium is magnificent and we are really looking forward to the community being able to see that and utilize that and all of our students. The, the Council Rock building is again phenomenal. It's a new building inside and it's really really exciting and it will be exciting when it is all completed for the most part this summer and fully opened again. Uh, I will mention that the board also spent the first half of that uh, retreat portion of our day continuing our work on diversity, equity and inclusion, uh, really around culturally responsive uh, curriculum and anti-bias, anti-racism curriculum with our partners at the NYU Steinhardt Metro Center group in New York City, and they are just a fantastic group and continue to work with us through Curriculum Council, teacher development, our board work and uh, so we, that was, if anybody has anything to add on that half a day that we spent together, please.
I thought, I thought the entire half a day was great. The Council Rock tour felt a little bit rushed, but what are you going to do? So um, we'll go from there.
To be fair, Matt thought he would have a lot more time to show us around the building than he ended up having. So we'll be back. We, we promised we would return. So. All right. Thank you. Anyone else have anything in terms of individual activity that you wanted to make sure you brought up? Okay, then we will continue to move on. Our Brighton Teachers Association, Nicole, we, we have posted online your report, which is really kind of a brief update because it has been a short period of time. Welcome.
It was a short period of time. So we just wanted to express as the BTA that members continue to work hard to support students and make this the most successful year possible, given the circumstances. Um, and a big shout out to our families for all of their support and everything that they're doing to really partner with the teachers and help us accomplish what we need to. And uh, I'm always going to, you know, in honor of Stella, I'm always going to give the biggest shout out to the students who are just the bravest, hardest working, um, amazing kids from K all the way up to Stella. So shout out to everybody.
Thank you, Nicole. And what a reminder, they're the ones that are making it work, right? Absolutely. Resiliency, that's what that, that is not, not so much the ingenuity, but anyway, thank you very much. Our PTSA report, Eleanor, you're with us this evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, again, another quick update. Um, we are still collecting applications for the PTSA Lifetime Membership Award. Um, the link is on my report as well as also on the PTSA website. Applications are due April 4th and we will be having a ceremony virtually in May for that. Uh, the PTSA, as has been mentioned by the principals and others, are helping to start planning some of those outdoor end-of-year activities for the students. Uh, the DEI Committee just finished up terrific series of activities for Black History Month, and they have even more planned for Women's History Month that is now in March. Um, send in photos of your child and say why Women's History Month is important to them. Attend a Zumba class. Let's do some great books being read by the amazing teachers, like those from the Brighton Teachers Association. Uh, submit a letter to say thank you to some of the strong women in your life. And then we're also wrapping up the month on March 25th with Deanna Spagnola, our very own. Um, speaking on the importance of women in leadership education and how to be authentically you. Um, really looking forward to that and I think it's going to be a great event. Also saving the date on June 4th. It's a community-wide activity of a food truck rodeo and details are to follow to make sure this is done. Um, and keeping everyone socially distanced and safe. But that's about it. And um, again, we wrapped up our report to just say thank you to all of the teachers and administrators who are working so hard for our students and our schools and just making all of this happen and especially the Board of Education. So thanks, guys.
Thank you very, very much, Eleanor. We appreciate the report and we continue to appreciate all that the PTSA is doing on an everyday basis. Dr. McGowan Superintendent's report.
As if you hadn't heard enough. Give me one second. I just want to pull up a slide to share with everybody. Just would like to reiterate um, the point made with regard to reopening and a couple of just points I want to make sure people walk away with very, very quickly. Uh, first of all, we would describe access to vaccination now for staff. I, I would at least describe it as 100% in the sense that we've been able to provide links and information and get people signed up. And there's a relatively small number of people now still on the list looking for appointments. But I'd also say that given the way appointments have opened up regionally, people who are eligible and who want to find an appointment, I think now I feel pretty comfortable saying have been able to get one. And if not, we'll be, you know, I'm, this is within days, not within weeks. So that has moved really rapidly and I ballpark the number of people who are at some stage in the process, so either have an appointment, have gotten both doses or, or are halfway through that as somewhere between 80 and 90% or so. So it's, it's a really good number. Um, the requirements are still an issue for us. So you know, people are talking about reopening. How do you reopen five days? What do you do? And some districts making all different moves around this and trying to think differently about it, which is great. Six feet is still the issue. Barriers are not practical or impactful and they're not supported locally. There's no science to support the use of barriers. Your air that you expel, the respiratory droplets don't stay in one place because you have a piece of plastic in front of you. So the only way they actually would be potentially effective is if they went all the way to the ceiling, which changes circulation in the room and is also not supported in terms of um, creating a healthy environment. So that, that's not something that can happen and can reduce distance for us. The rate has to drop, as I mentioned before, it's got to be about a third of what it is right now for us even to have conversation about more people coming back. And then there's all these different logistics for us to be thinking about, remote to hybrid, hybrid to remote, what would people want to do? We will go out and be asking people, here's what we think it would look like, what would you want to do? And that would help us take the next steps in terms of planning food service, transportation, all issues, transportation guidance hasn't changed. And we wouldn't be able to put very many kids on buses. And then it's how do you have people eating without their mask on? Six feet apart and have enough space for all kids if all kids came back. And then the requirements around phys ed haven't changed in terms of a 12-foot distance. Music hasn't changed yet either. You know, we would need significant changes in, in the guidance that way or be able to figure out alternative solutions. So our principals are hard at work doing that and other groups are as well, as I mentioned before. Really digging into what would it mean if any of these things changed? So that's what we keep working on. You've heard a lot about events being planned and we're looking to support every opportunity. Other updates, just very briefly that I want uh, to mention to you. Oh. Quick items, 338 exams, Regents exams still in the mix. Uh, these are federal requirements and the federal government would not provide a waiver to New York State. So the tests are on, the state continues to advocate to not have them. And we would support that, of course, uh, but it won't be a choice in all likelihood and it will happen. Regents exams will be reduced down to, we think, four at this point. So it'll be a minimal number, but it would be the ones that are required for federal accountability measures. Athletics continued, as was mentioned uh, by several, great job um, in terms of basketball and wrestling, keeping people safe. Basketball team is playing a section game tonight at East Rondacoit. And uh, we wish them all the luck in the world. And we are now starting with volleyball and football, or they have started. And then the next round will come uh, right after the uh, April break. Uh, we are hiring, uh, as you know, sadly, Dr. Baker is leaving us and we're so excited for her, but we are sad to not have her as a teammate going forward. And that process is continuing. And of course, we've most recently hired our Director of Student Services, Deanna Spagnola, and very happy about that. Travel restrictions are changing. The governor announced, although they haven't put it on paper yet, that if you are vaccinated, uh, some of the quarantine requirements have changed and would not require you to quarantine both for travel or if you've been exposed to somebody who's sick. So we're waiting to see that guidance as well. And visual performing arts activities, although not scheduled yet, we're working really hard. And Dr. Leonard is to bring groups of people together to figure out how to do something. Feeling as though that's an important part of our program, just as important as offering athletics to kids who do that. We need to be providing these opportunities too. So we're still thinking about ways to do that. And now that the auditorium is pretty much complete, we can utilize that space and find ways to uh, bring kids into that really beautiful spot. And on Monday mornings, just so you know, videos are coming out, just a quick two minutes-ish. I try and keep it to two minutes. It ends up closer to three with some quick highlights and updates, trying to get people the information they might need that week with things that are going on in a much more condensed, direct format. That's all I have, Mr. Kankovich.
Thank you very much, Dr. McGowan. Appreciate that and much more to come. Uh, we'll continue to update the community. Obviously, one of the most important things in most every parent, teacher, student's mind is bringing students back this year or next. And we'll continue to update everybody as we have guidance and as we, as we roll plans forward. So.
Can I pop in for just one second?
Yeah, go ahead, Karen.
We use that word guidance and that's how the state phrases it to us, but I just want to cement for people that the connotation of guidance is it's a suggestion to us, but in the way New York State uses it, it is not. It's our mandate. So when we say the guidance is six feet, we don't mean that's New York State's suggestion to us, but that's the executive order that we follow. So I just want to make sure people have that in their heads. When we use that word, we, we don't use it in the very kind, nice way. It's not our suggestion, but it's our, it's our, what we have to do, right? That's the law.
Yeah, you know what's interesting about that? Really good point. And, but also I think we've even, we've even made some mistakes with that. And here, here's how. The CDC puts our guidance.
Right.
We're not subject to CDC guidance, right? So CDC guidance is actually the nice friendly, this is like, okay, you might want to do this.
You should do this.
But in our state, we are under essentially the mandate of the New York State Health Department, Department of Health that provides guidance that is the rule of law. And hopefully they base their guidance or their, I guess we should probably more accurately refer them as regulations based on CDC guidance. But uh, we've definitely used that interchangeably too. So that's a really great point. So people understand this is not just they suggested these things, they're required. So thanks.
There you go. Thank you very much. Good catch. And thank you for the edification, Kevin. We appreciate that. Uh, uh, next up this evening, uh, we have for members of the public and really for the group on the Zoom right now. You will notice that we have an unusual number of first-read policies this evening. There are nine first-read policies for a variety of reasons. Uh, how we will proceed is thusly, um, first-read policies, reminder to all. They are read for the first time, they are open for comment, question, further review, revision. They come back at some point for a second read and at that point they become approved, usually as policy. So tonight, what we would like to do is we'll uh, deal with each one. Uh, just advise the group what they, why they are on as a first read. If any of our board members have anything this evening, we'll capture it. If not, I would again encourage the board to take some time over the next week and really dig additionally, additional time they've already spent on them to dig through further. And if there's anything further that you see within the policy that we need further uh, question or clarification on, uh, please send it on to me. So first up, and we do have to deal with them individually. So uh, first of all, a motion for first-read approval, policy 6110. Personnel, code of ethics for board members and all district personnel, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry, seconded by Andrea, was that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. And this is 6110. And this policy that, that we have replaces our current policy in its entirety. And it's really um, to comply with the corrective action plan from SED for the federal IDEA audit. We previously adopted some, the same language in regulation, but the state now requires it to be in policy and we had already previously approved the regulation. So that's why that's come back to us. Does anybody have anything about that policy tonight that they want to capture? Okay, then please, again, we'll read through, take a look if there's something further, get back to me. Uh, but in that, for now, uh, all in favor of first read on that policy signify, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. A motion, please, for first-read approval on policy 5520 uh, regarding extra classroom activity fund.
So moved. Second.
By Karen, seconded by Sue. Uh, this is a uh, first read again. It's a policy revision. This has to do with aligning the policy on extra classroom activity funds with the GESB 74 financial reporting standards. Pretty straightforward as to align. And there's really nothing specific there that is a particular note, I would say. Uh, is there anybody that has anything specific on that that they wanted to bring up?
My only question was the word extra classroom is one word. It just, it looked funny and my, my, on the computer, it indicated it was a misspelling. So I didn't know if that's how we want to leave it.
Point. It is, I mean, in all of our audit documents and all of our auditors uh, paper that we've read, it's considered one word as a term, correct, Lou? I mean.
It's referred to in the state in the, the finance pamphlet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where our extracurricular activities is the proper for accounting auditing purposes, the way they wrote the language was extra classroom.
Okay, so we're, that we're comfortable leaving it that way?
Yes, we would need to.
We, we don't want to differ. I mean, I, I, you know, especially as policies regard uh, financial reporting requirements, I don't think we want to differ at all.
Okay.
That is.
That's how I see it. It looks weird to me too, but what's that, Lou? I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, that is the state's language. So we, we probably should be consistent with the state language and the oversight of those.
Thank you, thank you, Julie, for that. Uh, does anyone have anything else on that one? And all in favor on the first read?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There'd be seven in favor and none opposed. Thank you. Uh, now a motion, please, for first-read approval policy 1330. Uh, which in the bylaws, appointments and designations by the board. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Andrea, motion by Andrea, seconded by Karen. Uh, this is an existing policy, but it's all, it's being revised in response to the United States Department of Ed- Education amending regulations, implementing Title IX in the Education Amendments Act of 1972. And as I previously addressed with the board, you'll see a number of revisions that are required due to revisions made at the federal level by the United States Department of Education. I will tell you that these were all done under the previous administration. Many of these will likely be revised further under the current administration. But for right now, we do need to make sure our policy and regulation aligns with, as required. So um, does anybody have any questions or comments on that, where that is right now? It's actually a pretty straightforward one anyway. So. All right, then all in favor of that first read?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seven in favor and none opposed. Motion, please, for approval, first-read policy 1620, again, a bylaws policy around the annual organizational meeting.
A moved.
Moved by Larry.
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Uh, this is an existing policy. And again, it's revised in response to amendments to education law, sections 2502 and 2504 that actually pertain to small city school districts, which is not us. But to align the uh, policy completely across the state, uh, we require an update to our existing policy. Essentially allows us to hold annual organizational meetings of the board during the first week of July. So does anyone have anything further on that one? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That was seven in favor and none opposed. Motion, please, for approval, policy 1640, again, bylaws having to do with absentee ballots.
So moved. Second.
That was Christina moved it and seconded by Karen. Thank you. This is an existing policy and it's being revised to response to changes to education law and Commissioner of Education regulations. And uh, again, continuing to review that and it, I think it's almost proactive backwards. But anyway. Does anybody have any questions on that or comment at this point in time? And all in favor of first read? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That's seven in favor and none opposed. We're almost there. We're halfway through. Come on, everybody. A motion, please, for approval of first read of policy 5681 uh, on school safety plans.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Andrea, seconded by Christina. Uh, this is uh, existing policy. But again, this is being revised in response to amendments for education law in addition of labor law, a couple of other education law sections. Essentially requiring district-wide safety policies, safety plans to include protocols for responding to a declared public health emergency involving a commit human alright, what's that word?
Communicable.
Thank you, disease from our uh, medical advisor. Uh, that are subs- substantially consistent. You can see a number of these are catch-ups changing because of COVID operation. And that's what this one is here too. If you took a If you took a look through that, you could see that section clearly, literally defined. Does anyone have anything further on that one this evening? Then all in favor of first read? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's seven in favor and none opposed, thank you. Policy, a motion, please, for first-read policy 3420, community relations, non-discrimination and anti-harassment in the district.
So moved.
Second.
Susan, were you the motion? Second was Christina, I think, was that? Yeah, thank you. This again is an existing policy that's being revised due to a variety of changes. Federal and state non-discrimination and anti-harassment laws. Most of these were included in the revisions that the federal government Department of Education did to Title IX, and that's reflected in the updates here. Does anybody have anything further on this or questions? That all in favor of first read?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that carries seven in favor and none opposed. A motion, please, for approval of first-read policy 7420 with regard to students, sports and the athletic program.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Karen, seconded by Larry, and this one is an existing policy also, and this is the same. This is being revised in regards to changes made from the United States Department of Education on Title IX. And any further question or comment on this at the moment? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And that is seven in favor and none opposed. Our final policy of the evening, motion, please, for first approval, first-read policy 5633, gender-neutral, single-occupation bathrooms.
So moved.
Moved by Christina.
Second.
You can't let it die for lack of a second, thank you.
Second.
I saw you, I saw you. Okay, this is a new policy, this one is one of the, it's a, it's a full new policy, it's a required policy. Gender-neutral, single-occupancy bathrooms, comes from state education law section 409, and you can read that, it's a complete full policy, and it's now required. So we had a policy covering this, but it did not go into far, for, far enough in terms of that section of the law, so. Does anyone have any question on that one right now or comment?
I have a quick question, Mark. Is it applicable only to staff or students as well that we need to designate? Or is it just any single occupancy bathroom being gender-neutral? Just, it covers both students and staff?
I believe it covers any, but I will, I'll make a note right here and we'll double check.
Excellent.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything that we want to make note of tonight? Okay, with that question yet to be determined, approval of the first read, all in favor? Anyone opposed? And that one carries seven in favor and none opposed. And again, we'll dig into everything in a little bit more detail, take a look through, further questions, there's a lot there. A few of them, like I said, the ones that are revisions to the, due to Title IX changes at the federal level, they sort of are what they are. And I think most of us that I've read anticipate many of those, if not all of those, to have correcting language issued fairly soon, so. But the others that are new policies, we need to take a look a little further, if you see any, see anything there, let me know. Next up this evening, we have two textbooks. You have the backing documentation on Brighton High School AP Biology in Focus textbook, and also at TCMS, the grade six through eight, essential health skills for middle school for seventh grade, and comprehensive health skills for eighth grade. I do believe we can take care of these both in one motion, so I'll ask for a motion to approve the two textbooks as outlined, and based on the information provided by Dr. Baker, motion, please.
So moved.
Moved by Karen.
Okay.
Seconded by Christina. Does anyone have any questions or comments on those texts? Dr. Baker, anything to add? Pretty straightforward, right? We again, continue to appreciate and thank our staff for the very thorough job that they do in reviewing and recommending texts moving forward. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That carries seven in favor and none opposed. This next item, item number 10, BOSI's Board nomination, I am going to abstain on this issue, I'm going to turn it over to Julene. But before I do that, I just want to make note that Sora Sax, who has served as the Brighton nominee to the BOSI's Board of Education for over 19 years, will be stepping down, and we appreciate her service. We will recognize her further before she finishes up at the end of the school year. But we did want to make note of that and thank her for all that she's done over a very long period of time, serving Brighton on that BOSI's Board of Education. So at this point, I'm going to abstain and let Julene take this item on, if you folks are okay.
Yeah, I would like to call for a motion to approve the nomination for Mark Kakanovic to serve as a member of the Number One BOSI's Board for a term of three years, to begin July 1st, 2021, and to end on June 30th, 2024. So could I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Andrea, who's, who said it first, Karen?
I think we all did at the same time.
Okay, Karen made the motion, Andrea, you seconding it?
Sure, yep.
All right. Is there, anybody have any comments or questions? Then I'm going to ask for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's six yes, zero nays, correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Mark, you can rejoin us.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm glad it didn't take too long, I was a little, no. Just briefly, I said to the board, I appreciate your faith in me, I'm looking forward to that, doing something a little different and serving, continue to serve the district, so thank you, I do appreciate that.
Mark, before you go, can I just make a quick comment? At the risk of embarrassing you, but I'm going to say it out loud to everybody who should hear it. I broke the news to my colleagues, other superintendents the other day, that Mark was retiring from this board, but hoped to go through this process and perhaps be on the BOSI's Board. And people should know that the reaction from my colleagues, who normally are not engaged with board members from other districts in very many ways, unless there's an issue, a problem, concern on any one of the committees, where maybe perhaps they might talk about the fact that man, you've got that board member, and they said, what? And they, you know, that kind of thing. This group of people loves working with Mark. And what Mark brings to the region and the various committees that he's on, and the leadership that he's brought to the region is so valued and cherished by the superintendents at the table, and I'm telling you, that is not a commentary that usually comes up. It's just not something typical for superintendents to be that, just that engaged in that, that place that much value in somebody else's board member. And they, they were so excited that Mark was moving to the BOSI's Board, as is the, the DS, Dan White, and feeling all as though they were thrilled because it was the region's gain, and despite it being Brighton's loss to some degree, however, Mark then would represent us on the BOSI's Board. So I just think people should hear that because it's a very interesting perspective, when they also then were consistently, persistently making fun of me for the fact that now they get Mark, and so I think that's quite a compliment to you, Mark, and I want to make note of that.
Well, I, I certainly appreciate that, thank you all, I appreciate that, and they also added, I come really cheaply. It's very little investment at all, so they. I am, I am excited and I'm looking forward to it, and it is an interesting, you know, we haven't, we don't talk about it much in Brighton, but the, the legacy of the Brighton representative to the BOSI's Board, Al Lewis held for years and years, if, including while he was on our board, and then Sora took over. And so there's not been a lot of folks in that, in that seat in a long time. Now, I don't plan on being around that long at that, but I will do the best I can for as long as I do, so thank you so much. Okay, let's finish up, it's been a long, long afternoon and evening, so we do have a motion, please, to approve a cooperative bid for magazines.
So moved.
Second.
Susan and Karen seconded, so this, you'll see, it's a cooperative bid for magazines to be used for mat tap and in for school libraries for the upcoming school year, and through our cooperative purchasing with BOSI's too, inside joke there. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven in favor and none opposed. And then finally, a motion, please, to approve our consent agenda, if someone would.
So moved.
Thank you. And Susan, would you do second? No.
Second, I did.
Okay, got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Board members, any other items of business this evening? Dr. McGowan, anything else this evening?
Could there possibly be?
No, check with Matt, he'll share the magazines with you after he's done with them.
The prince of periodicals.
May we have a motion, please, to adjourn and put this all to rest.
So moved. Give it to Larry, I'll second it.
By six of the board, and seconded by the other six, Kim, pick a couple people. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, everyone, thank you so much, take care.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.